Our Father in Heaven, as we gather this evening for this council meeting, we're grateful for the opportunity that we have to serve. We pray for Thy Spirit that we will be able to make decisions that are needed and be able to discuss those things that we need to discuss at this time. We especially pray for the Atwood family at this time, that they will be blessed with Thy Spirit and comfort and the knowledge of the many prayers that are offered in their behalf in this community. We are so grateful to live in this beautiful area and bless us to make the right decisions that we need to at this time, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Counselor. We will call this meeting to order. This 26th day of January is our regular council meeting. We recognize at Channel 32, and we have many in the galleries that will be part of our delegation. So thank you all for being here. Before we move on, I also want to recognize the loss of our dear employee, Bart Atwood, and a week ago today. And we especially want to offer a condolences to his dear wife, Gloria, and to his children and family. So it was a very sad day for us all in this organization. But we also know it's a very difficult time for the families, so our prayers are with them. So we have an agenda before us and need to have it approved. Counselor Do.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. Do we have Dr. Merkley here?
No.
No?
He's not on virtually at all, is he? He said he was coming. Oh.
Okay, so...
There he is, right there.
Oh, Dr. Merkley. Exactly the person I was calling on. So make yourself comfortable, and if you want to come to the pulpit, we'd love to hear from you.
Or the podium, if you prefer.
Or to the podium, yes. The pulpit sounds a little too churchy.
Be a pulpit, not a podium.
A little too religious, too.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, Dr. Merkley, thank you for being here and understand that you're going to maybe talk to us regarding the dog park and the views you have about the whole concept for town. So go ahead.
Well, I thought, um... I was asked to give any comments on possibly where the horses are running by where a dog park would be. I don't know if that was...
Go ahead.
I also thought it was gonna be a discussion, but I'll tell you my opinion on it.
Why don't we go on a speech first, though?
Well, what I've... I was under the understanding there was a couple different potential places down by the river, but there was a conflict with the carriage museum running the horses by the potential dog park. And they were wondering what I thought about that. So I think that's not a great idea.
So the dog park is a problem with the carriage? That's what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I think anywhere the carriage museum's running horses, it wouldn't be great to have a dog park by there. But my question was, where does the carriage museum run going south down that river? And how often do they go? And if it's very rare and that you... And if the town wanted a dog park somewhere along that river, it would seem doable to me in that either you get it back away from the main trail or you could potentially put some type of a barrier on that wall facing where the horses are coming so the dogs wouldn't see it, see the horses.
So it would have to be an opaque kind of barrier?
Yes. That was a thought. Of course, there's other places to put the park, but...
Okay.
I do think, you know, when I see the symbol of Cardston, there's a horse and buggy on there. So I think that's important, that they are taken care of. My question is, how often are they actually running? And what's their projected plans for the future? I don't know if they have a representative here.
Okay.
I don't know if that's been discussed already.
I would imagine that might be the next person. But if you guys want to interact, I have no problem with that. Counselor Brown has some comment or question for you?
I just have, I just... The reason, you're right. When I requested that you come and talk to council, I just wanted you to clarify what you just did, which is great. But could you also clarify what a dog park is? What it entails? Why is it good for the animals? And why should we have a dog park? I just feel like coming from you, if that would be great.
I can do that. Any questions on the horse thing? I don't think it's good to have horses and dogs together. I don't think that's a great plan for a buggy.
How far apart would you think a dog park could be from the carriages, for example?
And maybe Mark could answer that a little better.
Okay. I'll save that for Mark, then.
Are you presenting something?
I can come up after your...
Okay, I'll just do... I'll talk about a dog park. I mean, a dog park, I get a lot of requests. And for some reason, people like to talk to me about dog parks. And a lot of people, I feel, in the town would like a dog park. It does give them the ability to run their dogs and socialize their dogs. And that is an issue. If dogs aren't able to exercise or socialize, they do seem to have behavioral problems and seem to be more difficult for the owners. Cooped up in the house, I think, a place where they can freely go and get that exercise. I mean, they can do that on a leash, and I think that's great, and a lot of people do do that. But I do think dogs generally behave better off a leash and socialize better off a leash. There are risks, of course, of dog bites and attacks. That would be my biggest concern. The infection... I think people just need to be educated however they need to be educated. But if their dog is vaccinated, it shouldn't be really picking up any diseases at the dog park. Even if an infected dog came to the dog park, the one disease we see the most around here is parvovirus. It's really bad. We're seeing a lot of it right now. So vaccinate your dog if you haven't. But that, the vaccine does very, very well. We rarely ever see a dog get the disease with the vaccine.
Counselor Bangry, you had a question?
If you'll allow me to ask this question to Dr. Merkley and also to Mark, how close do dogs have to get to the horses to spook 'em? Actually spook 'em? Because I've rode in Mark's carriage many, many times, and we've had dogs around. And those horses from the Remington carriage seem to be very well managed. I mean, you know, I've never seen Mark's carriage get spooked by a dog. So if you can answer that together...
Sure.
Come to the mic if you want. Hi, Mark.
Hi. So I appreciate your comments there, Dr. Merkley and Counselor Bangry. The difference maybe of the horses that you've been with us in a carriage, in a parade situation, are what we would call our Class A horses. And so it would be just like a baseball team. You have As, Bs, and Cs. The horses we often use down here for our carriage rides, there's not the drums and the bands and the children and the candy and whatever else around. And so those would... A lot of those would be C horses that would spook much quicker than an A horse. They will one day be an A horse, but they're not now. Many of you will recall, because you've been citizens here for a long time, the worst horse wreck in Cardston. I moved here in 1976 when I was 12. Happened right down here at the traffic light because of dogs barking at a carriage, not a Remington carriage. But the man driving had 50 or 60 years of horse experience. That's how dangerous that can be. But to say 10 feet, 25 feet, I don't think that there's such thing. Because for this particular horse, 2 feet. 2 feet, he's gonna be fine. This particular horse, 50 feet, he's already gonna be looking. I don't think there's a cut and dried answer, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Counselor Brown?
Hi, thank you for coming. So I guess my question is, today, I went on a wagon ride. Doc Jones asked me to go with my mom. And we were down there, we were on the river bottom, and there were people walking their dogs. Now, they were leashed. And there was, there was no problem at that time. And I have, I walk that path every other day. And I see dogs off-leash all the time. And I'm sure you have, when you are going through there with your wagons. I guess my question is, they're there anyway. We're seeing them. People have dogs, whether they're on leash. We love those people. If they're off-leash, we're cussing them a little. But it's already happening. I guess my, I just, I'm wondering how we can... How can we make everyone happy? Isn't that the question? Like, how can we... Like, Dr. Merkley said, if we had a location down there along the river and we maybe had the chain fence with the slots in it so that the dogs can't see the horses. And maybe it's at the bottom of the hill and it's closer to the bottom of the hill. So it's well far away from where the wagons are going. Like, I don't have a right answer. But the problem is, if we do have a dog park, which I believe that is our goal here, do you want it in your backyard? Do I want it in my backyard? That's the beauty of it being along the river there is we don't have the residents as concerned with it being down there because it's not in their backyard. And so it's a real hard... Can you, can you help me with this? Like, what is best?
I guess all I can do is suggest.
Yes.
I belong to county, the county of Cardston. I don't belong to the town of Cardston. If I could do this, and where I'm coming from is I'm somewhat familiar with Lethbridge's dog park. I think a dog park is a fantastic idea. I'm very familiar with Strathmore's dog park. And the reason I am is because we were up there to a rodeo finals with my boys. And it was right next door. We had a few hours in between the performances. I went over there and I hung out because I thought, that was way before any of this discussion.
Yes.
I took pictures of all the rules they have there. I visited with the patrons that use it. I think it looks like a fantastic idea. If I was to make a suggestion to this council, it would be to put it at the extreme west end of town, up by the trust factory where you have probably 100 acres or more up in that area. That would be similar to what Lethbridge does. It would be similar to what Strathmore does. It's not in the heart of town. It's not in somebody's backyard. These people all drove their dogs to the park. They didn't walk their dogs. That's not that far. If you did live at the west end, especially Counselor Brown, as much as you walk, that would be nothing for you to walk a dog up there. So I sure don't want to say that a dog park's a bad idea because I don't agree with that.
I appreciate you saying that.
But I do think mixing them with the horses is a bad idea.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Counselor Selk?
So, Mark, you suggested the industrial park. What about the agrodome?
I think that they too have space for a dog park, but they don't have near the space as what I just referred to. Because as soon as you start taking some space away from the agrodome, then there's less they can do with their cattle. There's less they can do with their horses. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, though.
I think the issue is that the agrodome, we're not taking away developed space that's developed for a different purpose. So if it's at the agrodome, we're not taking space away from the industrial park where we're planning on developing it into something someday.
That's, you're probably accurate, then, on that.
Yeah. There is somebody in the galleries that would like to speak, but I do not know that normally...
Would it be possible to pull up a map on the screen and look at the possible areas that... I mean, there's only three or four areas that could have a dog park in the creek bottom. So if we're gonna argue about it, we might as well talk about the actual areas that could potentially hold it?
If a sham is able to pull a map, we'll be able to see it.
Because I walk my dog down there a lot, and I know what spots would work and what spots wouldn't work. And there's really only three spots in my mind that could work. And two of them, I really don't think that they would have an issue with the carriages. The one could possibly, but I think that we could easily work in a way that would make it work. Like, we would be 20 feet, 30 feet back from the... I don't know if there, if any of these areas are actual possibilities, but if they were, then, I mean, those are the only three areas I can think of that would work, so...
I'd like to know where you... I actually don't know where you go. So maybe when that map comes up?
Does anybody have a pointer or a stick or something? A mouse? A stick?
Show your whole route, Mark.
So in my, in my opinion, I think that... I can only think of three places, to be honest. But the one place would be straight down the hill from All Smiles, adjacent to that area that we talked about last meeting. So there's, it's not huge, but it is, it's a nice area. Yeah, back up in there.
Just takes a minute to load that. So you're talking in...
By the trees up there. Yeah, so, yeah, a little bit...
That's All Smiles right here.
Yeah, so like, at the bottom of that hill. And then if you go over to... That's that, that private fence that we talked about last time, right? So if we just continued this fence across here and took that area, I think that would work. It wouldn't be huge. And I think that would be the one that would probably interfere with the carriages the most. The other area would be down the creek, south of there. And it would be in between these two roads. So here, so you've got your carriage trail here. And I think the advantage of that one is that the carriage trail's up probably a 10-foot elevation. There's a bank there. So if the fence was at the bottom of that, the dogs wouldn't even see the carriages. If the fence was at the top of it, I still think that the dogs would be enough below the hill that they're not gonna be up there barking at the, at the carriages. So that would have to be in between the walking trail and the carriage trail. Yeah, and that's quite a big area. Like, you can't throw a stick in that area. And there's a couple trees on it. There's already garbage cans. There is a bench there. And there's enough, a nice spot that you can walk down to the creek and let your dog drink on leash, of course. The whole off-leash thing, I mean, we have a bylaw officer in this town, right? And you're supposed to have your dog on a leash. So if there's people that are continually down there with dogs off a leash, shouldn't we be able to report them?
Yes.
And I think having a dog park that's fenced off is going to increase the likelihood of people being on a leash outside of the dog park. Personally. The last spot that I was going to suggest would probably work is right on Ninth Avenue.
Ninth, okay, hold on.
So if you head down the creek a little bit further.
Yeah. Oh, I really zoomed out there, man. Hold on. So are you talking near the creek?
Um, right near the, yeah, right, well, on the... It would be west of the carriage road. And I don't know how far you guys go down that. Because is there a turnaround spot down there?
That goes up to Sunset Park?
Yeah.
Let me go back here, Mark.
We do go south there, but we don't go south there like we do in the summer. We go every 20 minutes on the other route, which your mouse is pretty much at the south end of where we're...
You don't go south of this junction, do you?
We do.
Oh, okay.
But not, not on the regular...
Okay.
Okay. So if you go further south?
Yep, let me cruise over there.
Right.
We should hit Ninth here on this one.
I mean...
Let me get as much here as we can.
So you can see these, this set of trees down here in the corner? It could almost incorporate that and maybe go like in the trees here and up in this area? It's mostly hill. It wouldn't be the most ideal, but I think it would work. I know a lot of us in the dog park committee, our first spot is just up here on the flat area. And I personally think that there's enough flat area up there that even if dogs were barking, which I don't think they will be, they're not gonna be loud enough to bother anybody up on this, this side here.
It's gonna be kicked around a lot.
A lot of people really like that area. I like the creek bottom because I live down there and I walk my dog there all the time. But I think that that area at the top of the hill would also be really nice.
We've had a lot of kickback on that particular area.
Too much NIMBY with that spot.
A lot of NIMBYs, yeah.
But I mean, like, our whole town is based around horse culture, right? So are we gonna get more kickback from the whole outlook of our town or a couple neighbors? I don't...
Well, I think these neighbors are worried about your dog barking. They don't worry about the horses neighing that much.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's what their concern is.
So, Mark, when you look at those suggestions, is there something that comes to mind that...
If, if we could have a choice, we realize this is your property, not ours, I would go closest to the Ninth Avenue for ours. The flat, I see why he would like that. But there's, it's not huge and there's not enough room. So if you'd let me go back to when we were at the FCA finals, there was a chain leak fence. Then our horses, there'd be three or four dogs in there running around. There wasn't one dog that didn't come over that fence and bark at our horses. Not one. We were there for three days. And, and so they just... I'm not saying that they ever would have bit 'em if they could have, but I'm just saying that's pretty typical dog behavior, in my opinion, that they want to do that. And so if you were going to build something, probably the whole area would have to be slatted so the horses couldn't see the dogs and the dogs couldn't see the horses.
But it would be on Ninth? The one on Ninth Ave?
If, if we were to choose, that would be our first choice of where it went.
You don't find yourself that far south, do you, with carriages? Because you can't get up out of there with a carriage.
Yeah, we, we do drive that trail.
Oh, okay.
But we don't do it on the 20-minute intervals in the summer, like June, July, and August.
I didn't know you went that far south ever.
Can we?
Like, all the way to Ninth?
Yeah, we do.
Oh, okay.
And, and we're not the only ones in this town that drive carriages, right?
Yes, there's quite a few of them.
And, and so, you know, the others use that trail quite a bit. But if you could take your mouse, Jeff, if you would, please, and just go back and let's show everybody what we do every 20 minutes for three months.
So we're going to the laneway intersection, back to the bridge? That idea?
Exactly.
Okay. One second here. Sorry, I'd love to tell you I have rocket-fast internet, but...
Mark, Mark, you don't use blinders on your horse?
We do use blinders.
Do you?
Yeah.
And they, they, will they obstruct the horses from seeing the dogs at certain angles?
If the dog's coming from back here, they won't see the dog.
Yeah.
But if he's where you were, he's definitely gonna see the dog.
Nothing, so...
Okay, there we are.
So there's your bridge right there, Mark.
Yeah, and so if you would go south, go across the bridge and then go south to right there, right there. And that's where we turn. And then we go back all the way to the football field. And that's where we turn. And we come back across the bridge and back to our property. So that's what we do every 20 minutes in the summertime.
You consistently go south?
Consistently to the point of what he just said.
Yeah, to this, this intersection, yeah.
If, if I could just address the council for a second. My name's Darren. I work at the Remington Museum. I'm the acting manager. And I'm really glad I brought Mark with me today because he's forgotten more about horses than I'll ever know. But what I wanted to tell you is our intention is to continue on with the carriage rides. Hopefully, we'll be open within the next couple of weeks. We had a very, very positive response from the public last year. And we did the numbers, and over the last 10 years or so, we average about 250 to 275 carriage rides per annum with approximately 2,500 people that take in the carriage rides. And as I'm sure you're aware, it's, it's pretty much the highlight for most of the visitors that come to the museum. So I just wanted council and the mayor to, to be aware of that.
Okay, so are you in agreement at least regarding the possible location along the river on Ninth?
On South there?
Yeah, yeah. The further away, the better, would be Remington's standpoint on it, if, if that makes sense. And what Mark has suggested is about the furthest away from our little loop there.
But it would need to be fully, fully fenced?
Yep.
Yeah, if it's gonna be, I, I, I think, Madam Mayor, if it's, if, if it's gonna be a proper dog park, it would have to be...
No, no, but I mean with slats, that's what I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I defer to the, the dog behavior experts, but I think it's better if they can't see the horses because if they can see the horses, then they're gonna be barking at the horses. So I think if it is, you know, presents sort of a blind to the animals, I think that's probably the most advantageous route that we'd wanna take.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. Anymore? Anybody wants to say? Mark? Come on.
I, I don't know if this has anything to do with this meeting, but are you going to also discuss the frisbee golf in this area? Because that also would make a difference with the dog park or the horse trails. So while, while you have these people here, is that a conversation you wanna have?
Please go ahead. It's, there's nothing, no harm to it. It will enlighten us.
Well, I guess our concerns, again, are... That is something that would certainly be in the way of what we have done for 27 years. And, and we would not like it because it's, it crosses the map that I have. It crosses, I don't even know what you call them in golf. You call them holes. Do you call them holes in frisbee baskets? And, and so the baskets, you know, you throw from one to two and so forth, they cross the trail several times. I don't know anything about frisbee golf, and I certainly don't have anything against it. I, I just question where those frisbees are gonna go and who they're gonna hit because there's a lot of people that walk and jog and carriages and horses that are down there. And I've lived here long enough to know that there's wind once in a while as well. And, and, and the wind can certainly change where you think that frisbee might go. And, and I don't know how dangerous they are if they did hit you. I'm, I'm not positive about any of that. But I just know that both of those things concern us. Because 30 years ago, there was agreement that, between Remington and the town of Cardston... I realize it's not you, councilors and mayor, that were sitting here when this was decided. But if we built a bridge, town of Cardston would build carriage trails on the opposite side so that we could use both. And so if that is taken away, those trails, that bridge is pretty much a people bridge after that. It's really not much use other than for people to cross back and forth.
Counselor Selk?
So, Mark, from when to when do you do your carriage rides? During the daytime?
So we start at 10 o'clock, and we're usually done 4:30, 5 o'clock, I guess. And then we do June to Sep, to September. Is that what you meant, Counselor?
So if there was a post that said, yeah, no frisbee golf during these time periods because of, basically out of respect for the horses at the Remington Center?
Yeah.
That work for you?
For sure, yeah. I mean, if, if, if they were done playing frisbee golf before we ever went on there, absolutely.
So you start at 10:00 in the morning, finish about 4:30?
Or 5:00. I guess the last ride actually goes at 4:40.
5:00 to 5:00?
Yeah. I called Jeff back and I looked in my day timer, and it was August 31st because I had a discussion with him about... This is the first year, I've been there since 1990, but this is the first year that we've had so many pedestrian problems and them not yielding to the horses. We would be going across the bridge and they'd just keep coming. That's not wise. That bridge isn't that wide. And, and, and we just had, you know, you guys have a beautiful water park over there. You have a nice playground, you have the swimming pool, and you have all these people camped over at campground. And so they're going across that bridge. And as far as, I think, you know, just things have changed. People don't understand horses and like they used to and have a little bit of, you know, respect about what they could do to you real quick.
So you really would benefit from having a sign, pedestrian yield to horses or something like that? On both sides of the bridge?
Yes, that's the conversation that Jeff and I had. Is, is that we need to put a bunch of signs there before our next season.
Okay. All right, so that makes sense. So here is an idea. So how would Remington feel then if there was a restriction on the time of usage for the, the frisbee golf?
I think if we could go ahead and run our program, we'd be thrilled.
If we able to restrict it and make sure it's enforced, of course.
Actually, the, the disc golfers don't like it to be called frisbee golf because it's not a frisbee. And as to what Mark had to say, they're a lot heavier than a frisbee and they can be damaging. I've seen what a person looks like when they got hit in the head with one of those. So most of the people that are playing disc golf are very aware of the dangers too. And so they're trying to make sure that nobody's going to get hurt. But now and then, it does happen. But it's actually called disc golf because they're not really frisbees.
But I mean, I understand the whole idea from thirty years ago was really intended for carriages and was intended for people possibly to walk on. Was that the intent?
For sure, because you guys built some really nice, a footpath on your side of the creek and it's used a ton. I see people on it constantly. We drive to town just to use it. It's beautiful.
Okay.
We, we love that walking path.
So in other words, it's making sure there's a safety factor that can be built in, whatever we intend to do.
I have been told, and I know it's just in the discussion stages, that there will be tournaments. And on those weekends that there is tournaments, that there's no way we could go over there because there would be like way too many people over there. That would be a problem, you know, because as councillor South suggested, maybe we could shut it down by ten AM, you know, so get up early and play your disc golf, but be done by ten, but on a tournament, it didn't sound like that was going to be a possibility.
Right, so then it, it cuts into your business?
It does, and, and I guess what happens is it, it has us making a decision of where else do we go? So do we go downtown on the streets? Which that's, there's a higher possibility of accidents as soon as you do that. And, and there's dogs, as we all know, that Gabe mentioned, you know, they need to be on leash. He's a hundred percent right. But there's dogs that kind of don't have owners also, right? Like, that just show up. And, and, you know, they've never had a collar on them or a leash, ever.
Yeah. See you. Councillor Brown, councillor South?
Okay, so I have a meeting this Thursday with the Parks and Rec. And council, council has asked that we take the frisbee golf, is what I'm speaking to, that we take the frisbee golf, sorry, frisbee.
Disc golf.
Disc.
For the love, you know what I'm talking about. The disc golf and their baskets back to the rec board to discuss it more, to look at safety, to look at location, all of those things. I'm happy to go back and say, and take all the information that I've learned from you, which is why we thought it was great that the Remington Center would come and talk to us. I will take all of this information back. I will give it to them and then they will talk about it and then they will send it back to this council. And if we have any other questions, I guess, I mean, you and I go way back, so I can get ahold of you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Darren?
Yes, I, I just, just a couple of points on the disc golf. If I'm a disc golfer, and I'm not a disc golfer, if I'm going to play, it's going to be Saturday at ten o'clock in the morning. I'm not going to wait till four o'clock in the afternoon. So that would be an issue I would have with posted hours.
Yeah.
You can put up as many signs as you want, but the question is, are people going to actually take heed and, 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 and not play when we're doing our carriage rides? So that was one of the issues I had with it and I just wanted to mention that. I think Mark touched on all the other issues that we had from the institution's perspective. Did you have any questions for me with respect to the carriage rides or the museum itself?
Okay, there, there is something I want to ask councillor Brown. Councillor Brown, I thought we said in another meeting that possibly your gentleman could be a delegation to the.
Yep, they are.
To, so you are invited to that meeting and when is that meeting?
So I was not told that the Remington Center was invited to that meeting.
Okay.
I do know that, that the disc golf people were coming to that meeting.
But I think if they're not there, it would make sense.
We would love to have you. It's Thursday at seven o'clock. I, it's Zoom, so it's online.
Oh, okay.
But.
So maybe you could be added into the Zoom meeting?
Sure.
Debbie, I don't know. Normally, we don't entertain the gallery unless they're on the agenda. So is there a point in particular you need to make?
I guess I can make it personally to one of the councillors another time.
Okay, thank you. So councillor South?
I think just the point that maybe the Remington should be aware of is that as a council, we have a number of citizens who would like to leave the creek bottom pristine without anything there. We don't touch it at all. The problem is, on the other hand, we have a number of people who want to use the creek bottom because it is picturesque. And as a council, we've committed to expanding the campground because we want more people there and we want more things for them to do while they are there. So it's a catch-twenty-two for us, if you know what I mean.
No, and, and that's, that's completely understandable. It's one of the busiest camp routes I've ever seen and it was busier than ever last summer. And the bottom line is, we're just, at, at, at the request of Jeff, who we talked to first, we're, we're just voicing our concerns. We realize it's your land and you can do whatever you want with it. But this is what we use it for and it's been a success for almost thirty years now. So that's what we wanted council to, to be aware of.
And I appreciate your view. So if you try to zoom in into that meeting, at least you will have a voice. And if Dr. Merkley wants to be part of that Zoom, we could include him too. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you for inviting us. We appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate your presence too. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, could I just bring up one other thing since we're dealing with horses?
Please go ahead.
Not, not the Remington, but other carriages that are running around town. There's three or four groups that do this. There's, there's little video evidence of what was going on today. Cars are dodging this all over the place. I really believe if we have a bylaw that requires our dogs, be, be picked up after our dogs, we need these guys to pick up after horses. I don't know how they're going to do that, but I think we should look at a bylaw that way.
So there is something there I want to ask maybe the expert on horses there. Because that issue came to the past council regarding, should the horses that drive around town wear a cookie basket, whatever you call them?
Bag your horses.
And, and so, Mark, if you want to talk to us regarding that, because Dr. John at the time was telling us that it's not easy to train a horse with wearing such a thing behind them when they go on a ride, if they have not been trained early on.
So he would, he would definitely have a valid point there, for sure. Waterton Park requires us to diaper our horses when we go there. And so does the street between the Temple Street Chapel and the Cartston Alberta Temple requires us to diaper our horses if we're on that street, to have no mess left behind there. And so we have to make sure before we ever harness up those horses that were taken to either one of those places, that they're used to that. But the first time they swish their tail and they hear and feel that bag behind them, it, yeah, it could be cause for concern, for sure.
Okay, so what do you do with just single horses that don't have a carriage behind them?
Like a riding horse?
Yeah.
I've actually never seen one of those.
Of course not.
With that apparatus on there, ever.
Of course not. Me neither. That's why I wanted to know.
I mean, I, I, that's just one of the things, I guess, sign of the times is, you know, those are things that are changing, right? That just, this society is changing. Like, once upon a time, it wasn't a big deal, but now it is a big deal. They don't want to be walking across the street and stepping something. Whereas that didn't used to be a problem. I mean, I know when Remington was brand new, I can't quote who he was, but they brought an expert in on what's the best thing, you know, the biggest thing you have to bring to your town. And he referenced a town in, I believe it was Arizona, that has burrows that cross the main highway all the time. And he said, that is why people go there, is to see these wild burrows. Well, there was a mess that these burrows left on the streets and on the highway. And so it, it was part of the cost of doing business, I guess, as far as that goes. And so, you know, everybody can have a different opinion on it. But as far as that town was concerned, they were fine with the burrows making a bit of a mess because that's why people came to their town.
Thank you. Well, that's something we will need to discuss at one point. We can always bring the bylaw back and look at it, councillor. Thank you so much for your attendance. Okay. So we're going to carry on the items on the agenda. And. Hopefully make good time before Mr. Hasegawa come and join us. All right, so we have the regular meeting of council, January twelve. We have the minutes need to be adopted, councillor Bengri.
I move to adopt the minutes of January twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. I will have to tell you something regarding that. There's a typo somewhere. Okay, so under seven, we are going to try to go to seven B and keep the indoor after we have our delegation. So seven B code of conduct compliance. We need an approval for the code of conduct compliance. It has to do with the electrical and making sure that we give customers that want service the proper information. Councillor Brown?
I move to approve the code of compliance report for this year.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. There is a large document, a water infrastructure study. And that infrastructure study has some recommendations that we will need to understand a little bit better. It's about the ability to treat more water more efficiently. And I would like to have administration can present for us later on, whenever is suitable. The, how much are we talking about in order to, to comply or to try to see how we can improve the amount of water we can treat more efficiently? But there is something in that water infrastructure study that is of interest to us all. It's regarding the government, governance model. And the governance model was something that was a bono contention with the county when we were doing the infra, the ICF. And the recommendation is that at this time, what we have is a fine MOU and it's a better system, the better governance model. So that is something that this council was comfortable with doing, keeping the MOU. And the recommendation is that only when we need to really look at rebuilding the treatment plant, that we look at that possibility. Now, if we update the treatment plant, it still has plenty of life in itself and we might be talking fifteen years down the line. So it behooves us to make sure that some capital money is being invested into that structure to keep it up to speed. And if we were to keep it up and improve the treatment facility, then if the county needs more treated water, there would be an issue. And it talks there about the licensing, but there is enough in a town and in a county to deal with that. Correct, Jeff?
Sorry, I was just typing something else up here, Mayor. Yeah, we're not, we don't.
There's no issue there because I can buy li- water licenses if they need more capacity.
I don't believe there would be an issue either with the county if they need the water and we have it and they, we need to expand it, they need to pay for it.
Well, it, there is, there is something, a part of the agreement that is inside the MOU that deals with that. Okay? So it's for your information, it's a very good document, actually. I was, I was interested in reading it.
Madam.
Go ahead, councillor South.
They made four recommendations for.
Yes, at the beginning of the.
Yeah, in the summary. So Jeff.
That is what I want.
Going to come back at when, what date? Prior to our next ICF meeting with the county so that we can discuss it as a council? These recommendations?
Yeah, I want, I want the costing also of those recommendations.
So.
Some we're doing now.
I didn't interpret the, the, these as imminent, for one thing. You know, there as we need capacity and as that grows, so I wasn't too panicked about that. Now, part of it, the pretreatment has already been conceptually designed. And that, as councillor Court mentioned, would be on the county. If that's what required to get us the right volume, particularly for the Levitt Mountain View connection.
That's right.
Then, then they have a preliminary design for the air flotation and pretreatment into the system. So we, we do know what that is already. We have not anticipated that that was our capital cost to bear. The only, I guess the only caveat I might have to that is if it made sense that it was going to extend the life of the plant significantly with a, an investment from the town to, that might make sense, but I don't, I don't know that yet, depending on what the county's preparing to do. As far as the, where was the UV disinfection? We knew when we put that in a few years ago that that was going to be a bottleneck. And again, for our current use, it's been okay, but it's probably the biggest bottleneck in the plant. And so we would have to look at doubling, doubling that up. And I don't remember the cost of the first ones. I want to say about four hundred thousand, but I'd need to look at that for sure.
I thought it was two hundred, but.
Yeah, so my guy that would know all this isn't available. So when, when you asked me this on Friday, I, I, he would have been able to answer all this very well. So I've got to get a bit up to speed and then, but I don't feel any of them are imminent. They just give us an idea of with its current capacity. Really, the end goal we were looking for too is what's it worth? That was the other piece.
Councillor South?
Jeff, I just got a follow-up.
Sure.
So with that first air flotation, when they talk about the reduction in turbidity.
Yep.
So I, I think we've had this discussion before, haven't we? That when we take out of the Levitt irrigation district, that's always a problem for us. Would this help solve it so that we could? Because one of the recommendations is you pump in the times when it's not as high demand.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great, except that the high demand is in the summertime and we can't really take out a Levitt irrigation district because of the turbidity and, 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 and.
Yeah, there's two things, I think, both that cost a ton of money, but two things that I think would help that tremendously. And I'm, I'm a big proponent of getting more and more on Levitt irrigation all we can because we're paying a lot of money to pump from the St. Mary's. We're in a unique position where we literally pump it uphill. And then once we treat it at the sewer plant, we pump it uphill.
Yeah.
So it is quite literally uphill both ways when it comes to our water and wastewater. And that's not a great situation to be in. So where Levitt irrigation is gravity-fed, so the two things are, one, the prefiltration station. one, the pre-filtration, uh, station as, as recommended, and two is piping the lateral K all the way back to the provincial canal. Because you take, you know, a few thousand cows out of the mix, walking through canals. And they're doing a great job with getting those fenced and get, you know, that has come a long way. Um, but after the first bit of water goes through, piping that, I think, can have a great help for us too.
Okay, so whenever you have, uh, free time, we love to hear more.
Well, I guess, let me be clear. What, what are you looking, do you want a- all four of those things costed? Because I, again, I don't think they're imminent, that they have to be done right away for us to continue in the agreement we have. But we can certainly start putting cost to them.
I, I think in time, it would be good. I think Counselor Self mentioned that before the next, the next ICF, we should have a little bit of a sense of what those upgrade will be. And to try to discuss if there is an appetite on the other side to join us to improve that, which I would hope would need to happen sooner than later. They have an issue with provincial order to improve the water.
I should also mention, the third item here, filter media, is being done this year. You have that in the capital plan. I think 175,000, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
And they're preparing for that now, uh, to, to work on that this spring. They wanted, Bart was intending to do it before the spring runoff, and so they're, they're starting to prepare to get all that in.
Right.
So that part will be done.
That's good. Counselor Self?
Yeah, just, my last comment is, we, we just need more tools in the tool pouch when we go to ICF with water. I think that's the only reason I was talking about those four items.
And fair enough, as I read it again, I think one and two are captured in the design the county's already done. I think they're referring to the same, uh, treatment process there.
Okay.
Um, just making another point of it. But then, um, we got to look at that UV because that's, that's where we know we have a bottleneck. That's knocking us way down.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item, uh, seven D, uh, just requires a motion. As you know, many other, uh, clubs had issues with COVID. Counselor Brown?
I would like to make a motion to refund the Cartston Gymnastics Club $1,200 and to defer the winter 2021 rental payment until the next available season.
Okay.
Knowing full well that we are able to get the money from the moist, the M-O-S-T.
The most.
Moist, right?
The most, yeah. All right.
You mean session, right? It says session there, not, not season.
Yeah, they do two semesters a year.
Yeah, they do two.
Because I thought they had two sessions.
They do two intake every year.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Comments, questions? All in favor? Thank you very much. Uh, the next, next one, Counselor Self, do you want to talk to it? Or is there something you want us to do with it?
I think it's just basically there for council's review. Um, it's a little bit like the plan of salvation, okay? It's like, where we been, what we're doing, and where we're going.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you?
It makes total sense, thank you very much. The thing that needs to make more sense, uh, is really what's, is what is going to be the timeline for the blood tribe? To, uh, to remove itself as a customer. So that's question one.
That is a great mystery that I wish I had an answer to, Mayor.
Okay. Counselor?
When do they start doing their own trucking?
Another great mystery that I have no answer to.
We don't know that yet.
Do they have, build a transfer station in standoff?
And as many times as we've asked, we've got no answer.
Okay. All right, the other question I have then regarding that, uh, document, and thank you so much, it's quite thorough. It's regarding the need to look at the way we have the cells. Right now, we have cells with 10,000 ton. But they're also saying, as the communities are growing, might have to go to an advanced cell system, which means digging deeper and it's more costly, et cetera. But I'm wondering if the reserve no longer come and, uh, has, is, wastes there, would it be needed to have the advanced system?
Possibly not.
Okay.
It all depend, see, ultimately, they are, right now, saying that they're going to gather it all, they're going to truck it themselves. So they want a reduction in the trucking costs. Their ultimate goal is to have their own landfill, but that's somewhere down the road.
Okay, we don't know if it's five years, 10 years, or whatever.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so that answered the question I had regarding that. Thanks.
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
So I'm just throwing this out, because I really don't know the answer. If they do their own transfer stations, et cetera, et cetera, will they still be using our dump, so to speak?
We don't have any knowledge of the detail of the future operation. We really don't have none.
No, you can't come in here. That's why I'm thinking it'd be hard to.
Well.
Trust me, we've had that conversation, Counselor, and it's.
It's a difficult conversation. We don't want the waste, we don't want the waste on the street, right? Knowing our ditches. Okay, so, uh, they, uh, we could, maybe we have almost 10 minutes. Do we want to add any more regarding, uh, the conversation we had with Dr. Merkley and, and Mr. Marty? Or are we satisfied that we got at least a sense of what they would prefer? We have now a sense of a better location?
Yeah.
Are we okay with that, or?
Shem, can you get me on screen again? Um, I just wanted to show you, we were talking in the office about how do we help the dog park get going for this summer, keeping the capital cost down? I want to show you a, let's call it an unconventional location, but the cost to start it would be really low. And we were just talking about this. Let me get, um.
It's over the transfer station?
Pardon me?
It's over the transfer station?
Oh, I didn't think about that, but no, not the transfer.
Down the cootie down there.
Uh, let's see, come on now. All right, um, it logged me out after that last one. Let's see if we're going anywhere. Okay, good. Um, and I need to get the little homework on it. What you're looking at is on Ninth Avenue, and just to the west would be the Agro Dome. In fact, if I minimize this, you'll see the edge of it. And then you have Purnells, Purnell's, Shaw's, and then you get into the more dense residential. There's this interesting, I know this is really narrow. This is 100 feet by 600 feet.
Oh, wow.
It's one and a half acres, and it has a pipe rail fence all the way around it. And the reason I think that's significant is, all you would have to do to make it appropriate for a dog park is put some game fence around that. Like, your fencing cost would be a fraction. Because there's pipe rail fence bordering. Now, I have not talked to anyone from the Ag Society. I have not looked at what that's currently used for. I drive by it every day, and I got watching it the last while. I've never seen anything in it. And I was told it's a, just a bit of a buffer, intended to be a longstanding buffer between residential development and livestock as development grows. But we were just talking, I was talking to Jill in the office, we're saying, you know, that could probably be ready by next Tuesday. Right? Like, it's, it's so close to ready. I recognize it's only 100 feet wide. I get that. But it happens to be a block long.
Counselor Barnes?
Yeah, I was going to say, back a few years ago, they, Chad Reader rented that space for some cattle.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
And I've seen him in there with this cattle, but that was some time ago. That was probably four or five years ago.
Uh, who does it belong to? Does it belong to the towns?
The towns. Belongs to town, yeah. But anyways, I, I think that's an excellent suggestion.
I know it's not the ultimate location. I get it.
But that's a lot of space.
So Jeff, could you make a bit of a parking lot there just off of Ninth Avenue?
Yeah, there actually, there's quite a bit of space here off the avenue that, you know, put a little gravel in there and keep it out of the mud. And you could probably get five or six vehicles at a time in there.
Mayor?
Yes, who are we? Go ahead.
Um, so I guess my question would be, uh, it sounds great. How would we mow it? How would we get our?
We'd just take our rough mower over there.
Okay.
We've got one we pull behind like a small John Deere tractor.
Yeah.
That we do.
It's not a big deal to get in there.
We've got like a six-foot rough mower that.
Because we do have, they do have $10,000 that they have.
Yeah.
Raised and, and tried to get for wherever it is their dog park ends up because they knew that their cost would be for fencing. And so last I heard, it was around $10,000, so.
It, it's just an interesting part because they wouldn't have to put in, you wouldn't have to put in 1,200 to 1,400 feet of chain link.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's already pipe fencing all the way down both sides. So it, it's, it's interesting.
I wonder if the neighbors will complain about the barking. Oh, wait, who's the neighbor?
Where are the neighbors?
You're mooing all the time. I guess a little dog bark.
Okay, so could that be related to the, uh, dog committee? Dog park committee, I should call it?
And I need to talk to the Ag Society and just find out if there's a seasonal intended use or, you know, there may be something that it is consistently used for, but I'm not aware of.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think anything.
They used to buffalo in there, but they're gone now.
As you can see on the map, it's actually a road.
Yes.
So it's not a parcel, it's a road.
Okay, so maybe if you want, uh, I don't know, Jeff or Counselor Brown, maybe, who is going to be the voice for that? Jeff might need to help them.
The other thing I want to know just while we're talking is, and Shem, do you see Mark on Zoom yet?
Yeah.
Okay, let's, uh, we'll also just kind of get Mark sorted out here too. Is this Ninth Avenue area, are you open to us exploring it a little bit with them and looking what fencing might look like? And just, just checking that one out too?
I think.
I think so.
Personally, I think it would be a good thing.
Yeah.
Are they going up on the hill where the flat is a little bit too?
I don't know how far we'll go. We'll have to see, right? Because when you're fencing four sides, you run out of money.
It's kind of rough country, and I don't know how, how that would work for a dog park.
Well, it would be, uh, maybe if you carry on discussing that with them, at least get a better sense.
So, Shem, do we have Mark? I don't know if, through my mic, if he can hear me? Oh, yeah, good, that's true. Oh, there's Mark.
There he is.
Hi, Mark.
Hi.
Okay.
Uh, give us one second here, Mayor.
It's going to be a little bit difficult to.
Mark, can you hear me? Yeah, we got no sound from Mark.
He needs to unmute himself.
Turn, unmute him.
Can you hear us? No, uh, we need to contact him and tell him to unmute. Oh, it's coming.
One second, Mark. Yeah. Mark, by a thumbs up, thumbs down, can you hear me? Oh, okay, all right. So we just got to get it going the other way here. Well, we're halfway there. We'll get it figured out. If we have to, we'll have you phone the number in and put you on the phone too. Now, can you hear it? Can we hear you, Mark?
Um, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Great.
Let's just get levels sorted here, and then we'll be good.
Technology works again.
Occasionally.
Welcome, welcome to our council meeting, Mark. And, uh, I'm sure, uh, we're going to have quite a few questions for you regarding the code that you sent regarding the rec center. So, um, how do we want to proceed, Jeff?
Well, what I'm, i- i- do you mind if I?
Please go ahead.
Walk us through it, Mark. Uh, what I'm thinking is, you and I talked on Friday. We went over just basically some of the key points you looked at from the code and from the pricing point of view. If maybe you could just take a few minutes and go through that first. And, uh, what are some things that came to attention and how you came to some of these numbers, and then we'll go from there, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely. Okay, well, when we first, um, as you probably, all probably know, Gibb was the first one who contacted me. And, uh, we ended up surprising Jeff in a meeting, which I don't think he was expecting to see me either, but, um, so what, what, um, what we tried to do with this whole process is to, first of all, start, take it back, take everything that, that Gibb gave the town and go through it. And so use that as a basis for a design. And then, then first, the first step in that design was, okay, so we got the concept from, uh, Jeff and Gibb and Brandon. And then we, we, first thing after that was we did a code review. And we wanted to know, uh, okay, so what, what were going to be some of the code restrictions as, as far as this build goes? So we sent you the overview of the code review. Um, for building this size for public gathering, it, you know, it says that you probably should have close to a, like, the, there's, there's different ways of doing occupancy, and the prescribed occupancy is around 1,000 people. Which, as we know, on a day-to-day basis, this is not going to be anywhere near that. And so the, the general idea there was, okay, let's design this building with bathrooms so that we can meet what the daily, um, needs for bathroom was, but design the egress and the fire safety issues so that it would comply with 1,000 people. So, so that it has enough doors, the, uh, travel paths are adequate. So if there ever was a fire, that everybody would, we've designed it so everybody can get out, and we meet code from that perspective. But design it so the number of bathrooms meets more with the daily demand would be, which we've, uh, Jeff helped set it, and, and his team set it 150, which we agree with, which would be, you know, ample for your daily use, right? And even if you had some sporting events there, getting more than 150 people in the building, um, is probably going to be a rare occasion. And then from that perspective, if we, if you ever do have gatherings of more than 150, then bring in porta potties, bring in extra, uh, facilities on an as-needed basis, rather than build in, I think it was, um, 18 bathrooms, I mean, 18 stalls into this, this build. So, so that's, that's one of the first things we did. So the drawings that we sent you are two options. And the, so the next step was to go through and make sure that the building had the functionality that you guys wanted. And so we did the option one, which is the, and I don't know, do you want me to show these, or should I just discuss them right for now?
They all have them in front of them, Mark. So if you kind of go through your, what you sent me, kind of in that, that same order, then we should all be in good shape, I think.
Okay. Okay, so I've got, and I can do this, hold on, this might be helpful. Rather than, okay, I can't share my screen. So.
We can let you share. One second here.
Am I, am I trustworthy enough to, to have that kind of power?
I'm hopeful.
Okay.
Uh, okay, maybe.
So I'm not.
Hit the arrow beside the participants, Shem.
Just get out of that altogether. And then by participants, down. Yep. Oh, no.
Oh, but, I'm sorry, beside share screen.
Yes, that's right. Okay, try it now, Mark.
Okay, yes, it looks like it's working.
Okay, there's your basketball courts.
Okay, and we all know the most important sport in Cartston, and maybe even Raymond, is, uh, comes up first. So, so then, then the next thing was, is, okay, what does this building need to be? What kind of functionality does it need to have? And then, and then what will it look like? So the first one was, is we designed some ba- a set of bathrooms to meet what the code said for 150. We designed it so that we had egress, the number of egresses. We actually have one extra door, so we don't need all, we only need eight doors to get out. And that, that 30-meter travel distance was required, and so this gives us our 30-meter tra- if somebody's standing right here, or right here, or right here, they can't travel more than 30 meters before they get out, that sort of thing. Um, and, and it does have the, the, um, wheelchair accessible. Um, and, and it does have the, the, um, wheelchair accessible bathroom as well. So those are the, the, the building safety, the fire safety things that needed to be in the building. Fire ratings, uh, the other thing that we did need to check is we, for the building uses, we have to have fire ratings around all the storage closets and mechanical rooms. So this, this actually would end up, this storage room would end up being partly a mechanical room. And then the rest of the equipment would be outside in a, probably we would recommend a ground-mounted unit. Um, but we, we can talk about that later. And then the next thing is making sure the building is functional, we'll, we'll do the things that, 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 that it needs to do. So whether it's basketball, um, I, I think pickleball was kind of an important thing maybe, right? On this one?
Yeah.
Then, then volleyball. So there's, in this one, there's four pickleball courts and three volleyball courts. The, um, oh, I think in this other one. So we have this area behind the gym where it's just, you could do a pitching machine here and bocce ball and, and you could do, you know, put a cake, put a net up here and do batting practice, that sort of thing. And then it still has enough room for a nice track to go all the way around. And, and, and so anyway, I, we, we sent a list of all the things that it could do and including gymnastics and pretty much any of the indoor sports you can think of, there's enough room in this to do it. And then we started pulling together the costs. Um, again, the tricky thing about this particular project is because it's a, a shared with the community and it's limited funding, that, um, okay, so then how do we price this out so that it, um, will, will be affordable by the community? Right? So you, obviously i-in, in any project, but this one especially, uh, funding is an important thing. So we start off by going through Gibb's numbers. And then we took Gibb's numbers and we compared them to what industry standard numbers would be uh, with respect to a build like this. And then that's how we came up with the costing um, for this, this option. And so the, is this part of my screen showing up now?
Uh, no, we just see the, the PDF of the gym layout still.
Okay. I'm trying to get back there.
Yeah, Zoom can be funny where you almost have to stop sharing the one and then ask it to share another. It's a little strange that way.
Okay, let's see if this works.
Yeah, it did.
Okay. So, so then what we did is, is we separated out site work. So we had, we did talk with, uh, Jeff and Brandon about how this could work from a storm drainage, sewer and water, um, parking, and how this could integrate into access and that sort of thing. So we came up with some rough numbers of that and this, we show that in the site plan, kind of some, uh, general ideas, and that's the 114,000 you see there. And then we costed out building option one, which ended up including, and so that the, the civil has been kept separate uh, out of these total numbers at the bottom. And so then we went through, okay, we got, um, Gibb had talked to Cam Hall about the foundation and slab, and we actually sent them some examples of similar buildings of what these footings will look like, although we don't have a design yet, so they had a good idea. Um, there's a quote for the shell and the structure that Gibb had gotten. And then we added things like the insulation, the glazing, the glass, mechanical electrical lights, um, drywall paint, flooring, and, and that sort of thing. So it's a fairly bare-bones cost. But we do add, um, at the bottom, you can see we've added in for, for about, just over $100,000 of a contingency. There's going to need to be some geotechnical, some design and permitting costs. And so that ends up being just, just under 1.8 million. And so after looking at that, we thought, well, okay, um, the, the initial discussions I had with Gibb is, is that he thought that 1.5 million was kind of more of an achievable number. And so I'm going to try and do a new share here. Sorry, I'm try, I'm, I'm trying to fiddle through this. Okay, did that come up, the other screen?
Yep.
Yes, so we're seeing the site plan right now, uh, is what it's showing right now.
Okay. So then we came up with this option two, and again, you can see that there's, um, some parking and we've, we've lined up the access with, uh, Second Street West. And then the way that's, it's the, we haven't showed the details of the servicing, the drainage, but that has had some thought put into it. But then we came up with another option where we just reduced the size of the building just a little bit. So, so what can we do to save some money? But still keep the, the functionality of the building. And so one of the things that went first was this extra space up front. Because, I mean, rooms like that are fairly easy to get, but this is the real value that you guys are looking for. And so the, after discussing that with Jeff and his team, then we, we, we did an option where we moved that. And then we just narrowed the building by 10 feet, is all we did. And one of the reasons is, is just reducing that span by 10 feet, that, and we haven't really looked at the, the cost savings, but that does save quite a bit of money because this, you pay a lot to span, anything over 100 feet, every 10 feet you go adds incrementally to the cost. And so now we're at 110-foot span across that way. And so we wanted to see what kind of functionality we have if we, um, reduce the size just a bit. So lengthwise, the building's the same. Now, our basketball court's a little tighter, our full-court basketball, but it still fits. We still get cross-court basketball. Um, we do lose, it gets a little too crowded to do three volleyball courts and four a pickleball court. So we've lost a little bit in, in that way. So we, we still could fit three volleyball courts across there, but it's tight. And then same thing with pickleball, it gets a little tight, they start encroaching onto the running track if we end up doing that. Um, but from a length perspective, we still get the functionality that we need here and the losing 10 feet didn't really lose us anything with respect to, um, uh, really the functionality. So then with that, we thought, okay, well, how much does that save us? If we, if we do that? And in the cost estimating that we did, let's see. I'm going to share now, new share. Share. Is that, did that spreadsheet come up again?
Yep.
Okay, so then, then what does that save us really? And how much difference that makes? Pardon me?
Nothing, Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, so it saves us a couple hundred thousand dollars. So it gets us a lot closer to maybe that number, if that number, and I, and I, and again, I don't know what the magic number is to make this project go. But one of the things that we do want to help you guys is still create a, um, a building that's going to be functional for what you need and meet code and be something that the community can enjoy, but also, you know, fit within the budget that's going to make this project go. And so that's something we're hoping to, to help assist in.
Okay. Um, Mark, while you're on that screen, Mayor, do you mind if I just ask a couple of things?
Please, go ahead, go ahead, because I had some questions.
Uh, you and I talked, I think it was Friday, Mark, and one of the, one of the areas where initially we were, we were a little ways apart, and I understand now how you got to your number, was in that, that site work and that civil. Could you maybe just touch with council a little bit about that number came way down from what both Brandon and you were initially looking at, but it comes with some, let's call it some trade-offs, right? And, and probably some further expense down the road when we're concentrating all that stormwater on a gravel pad versus a nice big paved pad with multiple catch basins? Could you just talk about that stormwater management a bit? Because I'm not as up to speed on that as I'd like to be.
Yeah, sure. Let me, I'm going to pull up this other drawing so I can top, walk you through the, the, um, share. This one's option, it doesn't really matter what option it is. Okay, did that come up now?
That's, yeah, there we are, we got it there.
So what, so this is an interesting thing with site work, and you make an excellent point, Jeff, is that, okay, so how much parking do we need initially to make this thing functional? And then how much do we put into a paved parking lot and that sort of thing? So what we've priced for now is we've priced out a 32-stall parking lot, which is not quite this big but close. So it'd end up cutting off right about here. And then the, from a drainage perspective, what we would do is we wouldn't want this runoff coming straight down the hill in a big storm, if, even if you have gravel, but especially if you have asphalt. Now we've created a concentrated flow and we don't want it to come down this hill because it'll cause erosion and problems and all sorts of things. So what we would do is we designed this parking lot to retain the 100-year storm or the 10-year storm, whichever one we decide to do. And, and then there'd be a catch basin in here. And then it would run off to, I think the catch basin in Fourth Avenue is right here, is that correct?
Yes.
And so then what would happen is in a big storm, this, this parking lot would flood and then it would drain off. Now, um, it, what, I think what, um, Jeff's referring to is that this is going to be a fairly rare occasion where it actually floods, because it takes a pretty good storm to, so it's, it's going to be maybe one or two storms a year and maybe only, you, you know, every year there's going to be maybe a few storms that's going to cause this to, to back up too much. But it will back up. And then the issue with gravel is, is that, you know, it does, it could get soft and you might have to uh, do some re-compacting. And, and there's going to be some ongoing maintenance that would go with some gravel. The, the, if you decide to pave it right away, it's going to be about double what the number that we show in there. So paving's about $50 to $60 a square meter and gravel's about $25 a square meter to do that. So there, you'd add another $25 to $30,000 to the price to pave that size of parking lot. Now, now the question then becomes, how much parking do you need for a facility like this, designated parking? Because what happens in things like this, and I've seen this even at, at, at ballgames when we've been, um, over at the high school, people just come and just park on this area anyway, right? On special occasions. So the question then becomes, if you have a special event, people are going to come out here and park anyway unless it's too muddy or whatever. But, but what is the investment now and then? Are you okay with deferring some of the costs later? Or do you want to try and build as much upfront as you can now? And, um, so it's a balancing act that I think, you, you know, administration and council needs to decide, and we're happy to provide some insight as to maybe what's the, um, I think there's always kind of an optimal balance between functionality and cost that you need to arrive at. And then maybe you don't, maybe you build enough that you don't have to build anything in the future, maybe you phase in the parking.
Okay, thanks, Mark, I appreciate that.
Jeff, I have a question regarding the costing of the electrical and the mechanical. You have that, uh, cost that $6 a square foot for the electrical.
Mayor, I'm speaking to your mic, Mayor.
In talking with, uh, an electrician today that has done quite a bit of large building, his opinion was that the cost of such electrical would be at least double. The $12 square foot is more what the industry requires. Can you help, help me, help me understand why then the electrical is costed at $6? I know I've seen bracket, Gibb, uh, uh, Gibb Schaefer estimate, but what would be your true estimate if you did not have Gibb Schaefer estimate for the mechanical and the electrical? In all fairness, we need to know.
That's an excellent question. Um, so yes, what, so I, this pre, this spreadsheet that I have, I use this for numerous projects in Southern Alberta and and even other places. And, and we typically have $12 to $15 per square foot for mechanical, electrical in a Class D cost estimate. So what that means is, is we haven't designed the building, we don't have, you know, but what we've done is we've gone back and looked at several buildings that are, um, have been built and what the actual cost was.
Yes.
And then that's how we come up with that. So, so I think your electrician is right. I think what Gibb's, um, two quotes there have, are from local contractors who are basically going to give a lot of labor. So I think that's the, that's the reason I have that in there, and that's why I referred that as the, the Gibb Schaefer estimates. But, but yeah, if we go, so, so, and this is a big thing, is that, um, and I was involved in the Raymond Victoria Park, uh, development as well, so I donated some time as well as helped them with the, 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 um, uh, wi-with managing the project at the time. And, and, and that was something very similar. So to make that work, they had to have people come in and help provide these kind of low-cut estimates. And as a result, they didn't go through the traditional procurement process for some things, because if you take this out to bid, you are going to get numbers between $12 to $15 a square foot.
Okay.
And, and so this is one of those things where, um, where the community teaming, and again, this is how, e-even with the Raymond Victoria Park thing, you, I, I think you guys are aware that even, that, that they had to stretch just to get enough money to do it. And, and even then it was a, it was a, a touch-and-go kind of situation. So anyway, I think that's the philosophy around those numbers. But, but yeah, I mean, I think that's an excellent question and you are absolutely right. A number that, the number that I put in this sheet is usually $12 to $15 per square foot. That's what I had before it all started.
Okay, so you have the same kind of brackets near insulation for the roof. So can you tell me what the industry would be, uh, as a cost per square foot instead of the $5?
Um, so those are, those actually are pretty close. They might be six or seven maybe. These are quotes actually, that, these are actual quotes that Gibb got for spray insulation from local contractors.
Okay, thank you. It's just important for us to know what would be the upper uh, range rather than the lower range. The lower range is okay, but we need to know what we could be facing also.
Yeah, and, and this is, you know, I haven't added a lot of bells and whistles. So like, one thing about construction is, um, and if you're building a house, probably 60% of your house costs are what you put inside of it. Right? It, it only costs you about 40 to 45% of the cost to put up the shell and the envelope, right, and drywall it.
Right.
So, so I think one of the other things is, is there, just want to be very clear, there's not a lot of extras inside this building. It's, you know, you throw up the shell, you throw up a liner up 10 feet up, and then the rest of it's just open, exposed building with lights in it and a heater.
Okay, so that would be a wraparound kind of material around the wall? Is that what I'm looking at?
Yeah, 10-foot, there's a 10, apparently with the building, and I'll have to confirm all this as we go forward, there's a 10-foot liner that goes up 10 feet.
Okay. Now, help me understand something else. You have a contingency, uh, percentage of 7%. Is that usual in a construction? For whatever reason, I have in mind that 15% was more the average. Am I wrong?
Five.
Um, it, it just depends. I mean, it, it depends on your level of risk. I, we go anywhere from 5 to 15 depending on, like, for example, if I'm working with a corporation, like in the oil industry, and they're trying to make a budget work, I throw in 5% all the time. It's just, it's just owner beware, right? I mean, if you're a conservative group and you want to make sure you've got enough money and then I, I, we seldom put in 15% because it, what happens is it starts killing budgets.
Yes.
But 10% is pretty common for a contingency. So I split the difference between 10 and 5, um, just because, but, but I'm happy to put that number wherever you guys feel comfortable.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Bengri has a con, a question for you.
Mark, I'd like, I'd like to talk about fire suppression.
Okay.
In this, in this spreadsheet you got, as a fire sprinkler system at 25,000. And I understand that according to code, do you not have to have a sprinkler system, uh, depending on the, um, occupancy level? You know, 200, 300, so forth, requires a sprinkler system. And also the age of the candidates or the, or the occupants in the building. If you have children in the building at any point in time, uh, is that not up to code that you have to have a sprinkler system?
Uh, no, so I'm just, I'm going to open up the code analysis for you real quick. Come up?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so, so this is, this is the first thing we do is we look at sprinkler system and what we need to, if we need fire suppression. So um, what, what they do is, is in the code, it says we're allowed to have 24,000 square feet, um, not sprinkled. And that's, and that's just based on square footage. So this is straight, so we're in A2. So this is straight, so we're in A2, Assembly Level 2. And so that's, that's basically gymnasiums, that's what a gymnasium is. And so we have, well, we, in the two options, we have between 13,000 and 16,000 square feet. And the other thing that's nice about it is we have access to all sides of this building. So if you could only access one side, we might have to sprinkle this building. But this building is going to be accessible from all four sides by a fire truck.
Okay.
So, so we don't need to have, this doesn't have to be sprinkled, but we did include a fire alarm system because that will be required.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Jeff?
One thing, and I guess it's not so much a question, Mark, but just so I'm clear, and I think you mentioned it, what we, one of the costs we still need to go get, and I have some people working on that, is all the stuff to allow all the activities to happen. So all the hoops and nets and all that other partitions or whatever we're going to have in there. You, you have flooring, but I think it just stopped at flooring, didn't it, Mark?
Yeah, so we, that's a good point. If, one thing that we would, we would add anything that you wanted to add to the building permanently. So probably basketball goals, that's something that I could probably help out with because I have some experience with doing this with some Lethbridge clubs. And, you know, cost-effective ways of adding that. And because, because that's something, if we modify the building a certain way, then we would, we could save ourselves a lot of money on basketball goals, for example. Or, or like if you want to do curtains or screens, that's something we could price out and add as well, because I think that's part of the functionality. So for example, to do the bocce ball or the batting cages, there's going to need to be a screen up along that back wall, right? And, and what might help the functionality is to put a screen, like put some kind of curtain down the middle, just because now you can break it up into two functional spaces, right? And so those are some of the decisions that we need to make. We, we can help out with things that are permanently attached to the building. And then if you want us to, but, but then anything else like, you know, sports, sporting goods, anything that's not attached to the building would be something that we typically wouldn't provide.
Sure. No, I appreciate that, just so you know, because you and I haven't talked since. I think when I talked to my guy today, we have Tomco and I believe the other company is Centor. And we just,
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We sent them the list of activities you had in the initial, the first part of your presentation. And then the, the two different layouts and said, look, just kind of give us itemized of everything we could need. And then we can start to pick and choose what needs to be in there in its initial stages. But I appreciate with the things attached to the building, like if we do wall-mounted hoops on the ends, we got to do something in those walls to make sure those are safe forever.
Yeah, we would, we would incorporate wall mounts into the building design, which wouldn't really cost us anymore, but it would save a lot of money. Those, those ceiling mount basketball stands that have the wires that, that roll them up, you know?
Yeah.
Very expensive.
Yeah. And, and we talked, just so counsel's aware, and I didn't realize this, I first talked to Mark about having retractable hoops in the ceiling. But now you have to have accesses to those hoops for maintenance and hatches in the roof. And it, but Mark talked me out of it pretty darn quick. So those got expensive in a hurry.
Right.
Anything else for Mark?
Any more questions, counsel? So I'm, I'm just, want to go back a little bit to the prep side. Jeff, Brandon had quoted something different, you mentioned that earlier. So what exactly was so different and what's the difference in the pricing?
Sure, and Mark, jump in and correct me if I say something wrong here. And you've touched on it a bit already. When, when we looked internally at the initial site prep, there was a lot more cost surrounding paving based on the required amount of spots as per the land use by law. So for example, in something like this, if we only do 30-some sites, parking stalls, I should say, it's going to require variance of the land use by law from you. Which, that's probably fairly straightforward if that's what we do. So he was just looking, but the other thing, he had a, and Mark, again, correct me if I'm wrong, I think his stormwater management in that site was far more, let's call it robust, than what is currently in your quote. Would that, would that sound fair?
Yeah, yeah, though both are, but, yeah, that's a good point is, is that I've, what I'm proposing is not compliant for parking with your land use by law. But I think your land use by law is ridiculous as far as what the expectation is for this, and it would kill the project, basically.
It's based on the square footage of the building and this is a very large building. So we, we've had that discussion and that's decided that we're going to not abide by what the land use by law says right now until we get this figured out a little more. So that's an error where the two big differences were was asphalt and stormwater. I know, I think Mark Brandon had additional catch basins, I think.
Yeah.
He had another one, I think, he had two catch basins.
Yeah, I think there was a couple more there, so.
Yeah.
Well, and a larger parking lot's going to require a lot more paving. If it's all paved, it's going to have to have more storm drain facilities. Then maybe if you get too big, then maybe that catch basin over on Fourth Avenue South might not be enough. And you have to go start changing infrastructure in Fourth, Fourth Avenue, is it right? Fourth Avenue South?
Correct, Mark.
Or you have to put a new storm drain at the top of the hill and run it down the hill. And, or, you know, there's, it's a, it's a, it's a rat's nest of stuff that you can get into. And I think that's the thing about finding the right design balance, that it's going to be functional, but it's not overkill. Because you can kill a project pretty quickly by going through all, if you think through all the eventualities of what could need to be included.
Yeah. But you also need to know in order to make the right decision.
Absolutely, yeah, it needs to be thought out. It needs to be conscious, it needs to be evaluated. And a conscious decision needs to be made with all the facts as to what the right path would be.
Okay, any other question, Counselor, Counselor Self, please go ahead.
So Mark, you have sewer and water and storm drain. And I just, I'm curious how you arrived at the numbers there at 30,000 and 14,400.
Uh, so the, the storm drain is just a dollar per linear foot. So we just do, I have some standard numbers of like $150 a foot for, for a storm drain. And then I have a number of like $90 a foot for sewer and water service. So I just took some standard numbers of unit rates that we've used in other places. And then I just assumed connection points. So there's no design that goes with it, it's just some, some high-level assumptions. Again, and on a Class D cost estimate, that's what, that's, we just take unit rates from other places and apply them.
So the assumption is that a contractor's putting that in, right?
That's the assumption, yes, for sure.
The town crew could put that in.
Absolutely. I mean, these are just putting some numbers around stuff that if you go to bid it out, this is, you know, these might be numbers that you might get back. But if your town crew goes and does it, then, and again, that's, in these small towns, it happens all the time. I'm sure you guys do that all the time, right?
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you so much. You have enlightened us. We understand a little bit more how you came up with your figures. And that was very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, thanks a lot.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
I didn't have to wear a mask, that's always better.
Yeah.
You're the lucky one.
Yeah.
See ya.
Thank you.
That's still recording properly, Paul, as far as you know?
All right, so that brings us back to 7A and 7F3. We probably can combine those, those two items at this point. So there is a discussion that needs to be had. The discussion is really open. My concern is, what do we know about all the, the goodies that will have to go inside? Do we have any sense of a figure?
We don't yet, no, Mayor, we're waiting to hear back still.
Okay. So the other question I have is really regarding the way we would do the business to have the electrical and the mechanical. The amount's a fairly large amount. Are we not obligated to go through tender?
So Mayor, we're, we're speaking about that in closed session. I have a 20-minute meeting recorded with our lawyer, Sean, on, on how you can, we can navigate that.
Okay, thank you so much. So that is important. The other question we have is maybe regarding the sizes of the building. There is two sizes of building, one 19,000, one 16,000. So I'd like to hear a little bit your opinion around that because it has a cost difference. No matter which way we look at it, we started with 1.3 million. Right now, we at best 1.6 plus all the inside, whichever that is. We don't know if it's 100,000 or more, but it's probably around there. So the discussion is yours. Counselor.
It's very, obviously I like the bigger building, but we, we really don't know yet the amount of money being raised outside of a million dollars. And to me, that's, until we find that out, that's, that's, that's hard to.
That's a concern.
Okay, I would suggest that A2 is probably where we need to focus our attention on, which is the survey questions.
Yes.
Because there's no point in, we can bash around the size and the numbers all we want until we get that out and back. Right?
That's a chicken and the egg or the egg and the chicken?
And another thing there. Any possibility we could take a recess for about 10 or 15 minutes?
Shim should be back with some food any minute here.
He's just standing downstairs talking with the food.
Okay, all right, so.
He's talking with the dog committee.
Okay, all right, so maybe, maybe we should take a recess. Counselor Self, do you want to call a recess? Thank you.
I'd be happy to. I'd motion we recess for 15 minutes or 20 minutes.
Okay.
Because I want to see Shim talking with the animals, not the dogs.
All in favor? Thank you.
Okay, you might as well go retrieve that food there, JD.